Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Sterling Heights City Council to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, please bless our elected officials. Grant them courage and wisdom to do what is right for all citizens. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mrs. Riska. Can we please have the roll call?
Mayor Taylor.
Here.
Borowski.
Here.
Mrs. Kowski.
Present.
Mr. Radke.
Here.
Mr. Schmidt.
Present.
Mr. Shannon.
Present.
Mrs. Zarco.
Present.
Thank you, Council. We need approval of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Kowski.
Move to approve the agenda.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Mr. Radke?
I'd like to move Consent Agenda Item D to Consideration Item C, 7C.
Okay, we'll take Consent Agenda Item 6D and move it to 7C. Is there any other discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item on our agenda is a report from our city manager, Mark Vanderpool. Mr. Vanderpool.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple of housekeeping items. First, in observance of Veterans Day, on Monday, November 12th, our city offices will be closed, so please take note of that. It will not affect our city's refuse schedule, however. And also, our annual Veterans Day ceremony will be held the day prior, on Sunday, November 11th, and that will be at the Sterling Heights Senior Center, beginning at 11:00 a.m. And the general public, of course, is welcome to attend that function. And if you need more additional information, you can simply call 446-CITY. Again, that ceremony is on Sunday, the 11th, at 11:00 a.m. And also, this Saturday, even though it looks like we could possibly have snow on the ground, we're going to have our Fall Pride and Shine Day, where we go out with a group of volunteers. We have anywhere from 75 to 100 volunteers that help clean up 30 to 40 homes throughout the community, raking leaves, trimming bushes, and getting them in order for residents that simply aren't able to do it due to mobility limitations or other constriction. So, we're always looking for volunteers. Anyone who's interested in helping out should call 446-CITY, and we meet at First Church, which is on Dequinder Road, just north of 17 Mile Road, and that is at 9:30 a.m. this Saturday. And also, another important event coming up. The Sterling Heights Community Foundation will present the Sixth Annual Putting on the Ritz Gala, honoring Macomb County Department of Public Works Commissioner Candace Miller, as she receives the Fourth Annual Richard J. Noddy Civic Service Leadership Award. And the event will take place Friday, November 30th, at Villa Pennas, from 6:00 to 11:00. Tickets are on sale, and those interested should call 446-CITY for more information. And I wanted to draw your attention to the screen before you, to commend one of our police officers, who has gone above and beyond the call of duty to take some time out to play football with a couple of our younger residents in the community. Officer Rada, you can see here in this picture, on his normal patrol, took a few minutes out of his routine patrol to interact with these young men, and created a memorable experience that I'm sure they'll never forget. And it's just one example of many ways that our police officers reach out to the community and even our younger residents. And it's very important that residents of all ages are comfortable with our police department. I just wanted to commend Officer Rada for taking time to do this. And Mayor Lashley, on my agenda this evening is a request to go into closed session pursuant to Section 8C and 8H of the Open Meetings Act, to consult with the city attorney regarding two confidential written legal opinions, and to discuss a matter in connection with ongoing collective bargaining negotiations. And Mayor, that concludes my report.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Vanderpool. The next item on the agenda tonight is the Consent Agenda with the omission of Item 6D. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on any item on the Consent Agenda? Mr. Shea.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council residents. I want to speak on Consent Agenda H, to improve an intergovernmental agreement for regional emergency dispatch service between the City of Sterling Heights and the County of Macomb. This includes police and fire, correct? I figure it would. I mean, okay, I had an experience with your dispatch, the emergencies dispatch, a few weeks ago. It's the first time you call 911 and no one comes. I just want to let you know, let the residents know that it can happen. One of our vehicles was hit on Mound Road, and they approximately called the officers at 2:30. I didn't realize what time they called. I showed up at 3:25, and I said, "Did it just happen?" They go, "No, it happened roughly an hour ago." So, I contacted the city manager's office. They contacted me with the front desk of the police department, and I forgot that it was coming through Mount Clemens. And the guy says, "We're on shift change." He was giving me some other excuse, and I hung up on him. And I waited, and there was a resident there, and he says, "I live in Sterling Heights, the witness." He says, "Is this what happens when you call the police in Sterling Heights? I pay taxes and no one shows up?" I said, "Normally, it doesn't. Usually, they respond." I didn't know what would happen. I left, and after I left, the officer showed up 10 minutes later, and he showed the people what time the call was actually placed and came through. The reason I'm here tonight is because I wanted to find out what happened. I set up a meeting with the chief on a Monday, a week or so ago. It was at 1:00. In the process of waiting for the chief, I sat in the office. Officers didn't know who I was. Somebody called the front desk, and after they hung up, the officer goes, "Wow, why do they keep calling us? What do they expect us to do? Go there and flip this, overturn semi?" They were totally unprofessional. They had no idea. I'm listening to them. They're complaining about the calls. The truck turned over at 9:00, and they go, "Why do they keep calling us? We can't do anything about this." They had no clue who I was, as I sat there and listened to this. I sat there for 20 minutes. They sure enough had enough time to get their coffee for the front desk. And by the way, I'm usually, I'm pro-police. I sat there and watched this. 1:00 comes, no chief. I said, "Well, this is the same response I got when we called 911." No response from the chief. I left, stopped at the city manager's office, and I'm going to put something on Facebook. I said, "No, I'm not going to bother with Facebook." I said, "I'm just going to come to a meeting." Is this, what happens with this dispatch? We're going through Macomb County now. What happens if you don't get any service? What are you supposed to do? People are saying to us, "Drive down to the police department." Well, why do we even need to call the police? If we have an accident, we'll just drive down to the police department. That's not what it's about. So, I'd like some answers. And you're going to spend over $1,862,000 for this dispatch. Is this how the system works? And regarding the chief, he may have tried to call me, but you know what? I'm tired of playing around the games and stuff, back and forth. One thing I have to say, I want to thank, he did contact the driver and the witness. I don't know what they said, but I just, the way this was handled, it was handled poorly, and I hope the dispatch works better for other people. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Shea. Anyone else on the Consent Agenda? If not, Council, we need a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Kowski.
Move to approve the Consent Agenda as amended.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. With no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item on our agenda is a consideration item, and this is to consider approval of a memorandum of understanding between the City of Sterling Heights and Teamsters Local 214 Department of Public Works Field Unit. I believe we have a presentation from our city manager, Mark Vanderpool. Mr. Vanderpool?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. At the January 3, 2018, regular city council meeting, a new four-year collective bargaining agreement was approved between the city and Teamsters Local 214, which is the Department of Public Works Field Unit employees. This new CBA instituted a special leave bank to address the situation where union members work extended hours in emergency situations, and have to report for regular duty with limited rest in between. The special bank grants each union member 24 hours each July for use, June 30th, through June 30th of the subsequent year. Union members can avail themselves of the special leave bank to take time off for rest without use of other banks. Unused special leave time is paid out in June of the subsequent year. As originally negotiated, the special leave bank is credited only to union members employed as of July 1st annually. An exception was made for three new union members hired after the July 1st due date, due to the fact that the new CBA was not approved by the union and city until January 2018. So, it only made sense to extend it in that case. However, a grievance was subsequently filed on behalf of the new union member hired late fiscal year 2017-18, on the basis that he should also have been credited with special leave bank hours, as were the other three that I just mentioned. The city and the union subsequently resolved the grievance by amending the CBA as follows. Employees hired after July 1st shall be credited with two hours of time in their special leave bank for each month remaining in the fiscal year. So, employees hired prior to the 15th of the month shall be credited with two hours for the month they were hired. Employees hired on or after the 15th of the month shall not receive credit of the month they were hired. Essentially, the amendment allows union members hired after July 1st to accrue two hours of special leave bank per month worked through June 30th. So, again, that would add up to the 24 hours in over-the-year period of time. In order to effectuate the desired amendment, the union and city must approve the memorandum of understanding, which is before the city council this evening, and include it in the E-Packet for the community to review. The union has approved the MOU, and the city administration is thus subsequently recommending that the mayor and city council approve the MOU as well. I'm happy to respond to any questions. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Vanderpool. Anyone in the audience like to speak on this item? If not, Council, we need a motion.
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Zarco.
Resolve to approve the memorandum of understanding between the City of Sterling Heights and the Teamsters Local 214 Department of Public Works Field Unit employees, and authorize the mayor and the city clerk to sign it on behalf of the city.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? Mrs. Zarco?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. Just one question through the chair to Mr. Vanderpool. Do I understand this, if they don't use the 24 hours over the period of year, there's a payout to them? This is, is that correct?
Mr. Vanderpool.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilwoman Zarco, that's exactly correct. They do get paid out for any unused amount.
Okay. Thank you. No further questions.
Anyone else, Council? No further discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item on our agenda is to consider nominations to City of Sterling Heights Boards and Commissions. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this item? If not, Council, we have two open seats that are up for appointment tonight. The Board of Ordinance Appeals 1 and the Board of Ordinance Appeals 1 alternate. Is there anyone who has any nominations to make?
Mayor Taylor.
Mayor Protem Sarrowski.
Resolve, this is suggested, this is for suggested action number one, for the Board of Ordinance Appeals 1. Resolve to nominate Kathleen Martin for consideration as an appointee to the Board of Ordinance Appeals 1 at the November 20th, 2018, regular city council meeting.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion?
I would love to speak on this for a little bit. I met Mrs. Martin Saturday for the first time and spent pretty much a good portion of my day talking with her. She is a very, very well-educated, very appropriate person for this position. She is a former real estate agent and has lived in the city over 30 years. So, she knows our city. She knows the requirements of what the properties are not only worth, but what different qualifications mean. So, I think she's an excellent candidate for this position.
Okay, Council, anyone else? With, Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Radke. I just wanted to add one thing. I know that Mrs. Martin is the mother of Chief Martin, and has said that she would recuse herself from any fire code issues that come before the OPA Board.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Radke. Anyone else? No further discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. There is another suggested action. Does anyone have a nomination for the next board?
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Zarco.
Resolve to nominate Brad Lucas for consideration as an appointee to the Board of Ordinance Appeals Panel 1, alternate member at the November 20th, 2018, regular city council meeting.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? No discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item on our agenda is Item 6D from the Consent Agenda. This is to purchase a AEV Type 3 Trauma Hawk 164 ambulance and accessories through a Houston-Galveston area council cooperative bid, total expenditure of $161,710.69. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this item? If not, Council, we need a motion. Mr. Radke, do you want to make a motion, or do you want to not make a motion?
Oh, sure, I guess.
Well, you don't have to if you don't want to, but you pulled this item, so...
No, I just wanted to discuss it, so I have no...
Okay.
So, you'd have to make a motion.
Well, anybody who, if you want to get discussion started, you could make a motion.
Sorry. Is it moved to a purchase, or...
Well, just go to 6D.
I'm trying to find it.
And it should be at the suggested action, page 35.
Resolve to purchase one AEV Type 3 Trauma Hawk 164 ambulance and accessories from American Emergency Vehicles, 165 American Way, Jefferson, North Carolina, 28640, at pricing available through a Houston-Galveston ARE council at cooperative bid contract AM 10-16, the amount of $161,710.69, and authorize a $161,710.69 budget amendment from capital project fund reserves.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion, Mr. Radke?
Yeah, I pulled this item off the Consent Agenda, because it's a large purchase, and I think I would like to discuss it, because we're purchasing a new ambulance, and I assume we're going to be putting it into service. We're currently negotiating a contract with the fire department. I don't have a problem with that, but I think it's kind of antithetical to what we're doing, or to put the cart before the horse, so to say. You know, we don't have approval for the people for the ambulance. We're going to purchase it as, as of right now, it's just going to sit in reserve unless we approve a contract. So, I think that also, it's going to come with all the gear to outfit it, and it's not on this agenda item. I wonder if this should all go together, just because if we're going to be purchasing life packs and everything else for it, it's not going to be $161,000. It's going to end up being $300,000 or something like that. I think it kind of just slips through. Additionally, I want to make sure that if we're going to purchase another ambulance and put it into service, we really discuss the ambulance program altogether. I'd like to ask Mr. Vanderpool some questions about the ambulance program, if that's okay with you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
Oh, right now, we're running a profit with the ambulance program, correct, Mr. Vanderpool?
Mr. Vanderpool.
Well, I wouldn't define it as a profit. We're breaking even. We're hitting the numbers that we projected in our self-sustaining report.
So, for meeting our numbers, why are we going to purchase a new ambulance and possibly throw off our numbers by going further into debt?
Okay. Well, Councilman Radke, maybe just a point of clarification on this. This ambulance is not going to be put into service. This ambulance will be added to our reserve to cut down the amount of time that our existing ambulances are out of service. So, this is just nothing more than an ambulance to cut down the time our others are out of service. That's really all. We're not adding any new personnel to it. We don't have to buy additional gear for, firefighter gear for it. It's simply a backup ambulance, if you will. Now, it's anticipated in the five, and this is probably what you recall, in the self-sustaining report, it is anticipated around year four or five that we would have to add a fifth ambulance into service. Right now, we have four in service. We're not at that point yet. We're still a couple of years away. I agree with your point. At that point in time, we should have a robust discussion on, number one, the need to put a fifth ambulance into service; number two, the desire to have an increased amount of ambulance-only responses, which is a little more efficient, obviously, than sending $600,000 fire engines out on a response. So, I agree with you. We need to have that discussion. It's simply a bit premature.
I guess I'm just curious about the need for a backup, backup ambulance. We already have four. We have one in reserve. Now, we have two in reserve. Are we having that much downtime with our ambulances that we don't have one available if one breaks down? Or do we have two out of service at the same time recently?
Mr. Vanderpool.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Radke, that's correct. There is downtime with the ambulances, undoubtedly. Unlike our other vehicles, because these are so specialized, they are not maintained at our DPW facility, so they have to be sent out off-site, and that does take a little more time than perhaps anticipated. But that is the case. I know the chief is working on a plan where we might be able to bring maintenance of the ambulances in-house. We haven't seen the full report that he's working on yet. It's not completed yet. Once he has it, we'll study it carefully and see if there's a better way to maintain the vehicles. But they get a lot of use. They're on runs, well, you see them throughout the community all the time. So, again, this is, this is just a way to provide added protection, cut down downtime, and there is sufficient funding in our self-sustaining report to, in our self-sustaining fund, I should say, to cover the costs of the fifth backup ambulance.
Will be the sixth, correct? Six ambulance.
Mr. Vanderpool.
That technically would be correct. We have four in service. We have one backup. This would be another one. So, yes, this would be our six ambulance. You're correct.
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Radke. Anyone else on Council?
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Kowski.
I believe in our backup. It says that it takes approximately 90 to 120 days after receipt of the purchase order to receive the ambulance. So, with Mayor's permission, I would like to ask the chief, I see he's here, to maybe give us a little more insight as to the reason that we need to purchase this ambulance now. And I was under the impression that, and please correct me if I'm wrong, that we're doing very, very well as far as servicing the residents of Sterling Heights, and we're almost at a point now where we could institute that fifth ambulance. And if that happens, there's nothing like getting a call and the ambulance doesn't run, or being out on the road and the ambulance breaks down. So, you do need two backups to make sure that we are able to perform our service to the residents. So, with that said, Mayor, could we have the chief address some of these concerns?
Yeah, absolutely. Chief Martin.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Good evening, Mayor and Councilpeople. So, to clarify the issue, so right now, we have five, four in service. This service is busy, a little bit busier than we anticipated. As an example, today, Squad 4 has almost 43,000 miles after one year of service. So, we are beholden to mostly buffwailing to fix our problems when something happens. As an example, we had two rigs about two months ago that were both out of service. We had to operate one that the windows wouldn't roll up or down in, because we had no other choice. So, I'm not comfortable with it being so razor-thin that we only have one backup, especially as we start getting more and more miles, more things are going to break. So, looking at the plan, since it's been so successful, I'm more comfortable with having another spare rig, so I approached city management with this plan to purchase this vehicle. It also gives us the ability to have those vehicles at our football games that we staff, the Sterling Fest, all the occasions that we put another rig in service. During this football season, we couldn't even have ambulances at all the games. Sometimes, we had our old rescue truck there, because we had a rig out of service. So, this gives us the ability to be prepared if, for instance, a transmission goes, and it's out for a month, or three weeks, or something like that. So, this redundancy is making me more comfortable having the service available. I would not want to reach out to another community and perhaps interchange ambulances if we can avoid that. That option is, you know, available to us. We could probably document that. But I prefer to have this as a backup in case we need it. Gives us that little bit more depth in the organization. So, I believe the next question was about the fifth ambulance, if I'm not mistaken?
Yes, please.
So, right now, the rigs are busy. The guys are busy. They're doing a lot of runs. And because they're doing a lot of runs, they're all over the city at any given time, which reduces the amount of times we can have those ambulance-only runs, because our mission is to give you the closest resource. If you call 911, and your incident is across the street from Station 4, and the ambulance is coming from 15 and Ryan, Engine 4 is going to respond. They're paramedics. They're right there in the station. We are not going to not send the engine that's right across the street waiting on the ambulance coming from another area. So, the busier the rigs are, the downtime at the hospitals, the amount of squad only runs, for an example, last month was 116 in total for the month of October, a little bit up from where we were. But it's still kind of new for us, trying to figure out how to code those through dispatch and send the right resource. And Station 1 doesn't have an ambulance. So, Station 1's first response area, the engine is always going, or the rescue is always going. It's that simple. So, yes, we have the plan to bring a fifth ambulance in. That's going to be, you know, a discussion that needs to be had, if it's sooner or later. It just depends on how these runs work out. You know, we might be able to put an ambulance in service intermittently if we have, you know, high volumes during certain days and things like that. But, you know, the fifth ambulance is still something that is, we have, you know, negotiated and ready to go at whatever time we feel we need to do that.
Thank you.
Council, anyone else?
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Schmidt.
I also want to mention that in our backup, it clearly states, "The addition of this ambulance will not result in an increase in manpower." So, it is truly being purchased for a backup at this point, and that's right in our backup information as well. So, I have nothing further.
Council, Mrs. Zarco.
Through the chair to either Mr. Vanderpool or Chief Martin. Just so that I can remember correctly, was this sixth ambulance part of the agreement that we reached when we implemented transport?
No, it was not. So, the plan originally called for the five ambulances, having four in service, one in reserve. And then, when this fifth ambulance is going to be placed into service, it called for the purchase of two, because then we'd have five in service with two backup. The reason, you know, again, we're a year in. As the summer progressed, and these rigs are, you know, they're still new. You know, they're getting, you know, 50,000, close to 50,000 miles on it. But we did have a couple of situations where we were technically maybe not going to have a rig if something happens. So, this is just a, you know, again, this is all new for us. We were making projections of, is one enough? Is two in reserve enough? And to tell you the truth, after almost a year now, I'm not comfortable with just having one in reserve. So, this, you know, if the fifth ambulance goes in service, it'll require the purchase of another ambulance, because our buffer would then be five with two in reserve, and maybe that wouldn't be enough when we get, you know, when the rigs start getting more miles. So, looking at what other departments do, having... having one in reserve for four in service is kind of a razor-thin margin that I wasn't comfortable with. And since we are doing well with the revenue generation, this was a purchase that I approached the city manager and city management with to purchase.
Okay, thank you. But, okay, the other thing that Mr. Vanderpoel mentioned today was that by buying this ambulance in reserve, you know, we've talked about not using the fire trucks on the road when you just need to use the ambulance. But we found that, you know, I live by Station Four, and I know many times I see the fire truck and the ambulance go out because they don't want to be short-staffed when they get to the emergency that they have. And I understand that. But I think that I would be more comfortable with this being on the table and saying, this is the way we're going to do business, than to say we're going to do business one way and it's not really being done that way. So that's my only problem. If you need to take both pieces of equipment out, then that's what we'll do. But I don't think we can say we're only going to take one piece and two are going out.
So to answer your question, the whole thing starts with the 911 call. The dispatchers are trained in emergency medical dispatching, and their goal is to find out, number one, where's the emergency, and number two, what is the problem with that emergency? So if every one of our rigs are in service, and every station has their engine, and there has their ambulance, and in your neighborhood, somebody calls and says they have chest pain, or difficulty breathing, or they're suffering signs of a stroke, or they fell and possibly fractured their hip, or maybe they're bleeding profusely, that is a life-threatening emergency, and we will always send an engine and ambulance, because two people, it's not, that's not the service we want to deliver. Yeah, there are places in the nation where two paramedics do respond to heart attacks and they treat the patient. But our survivability rate in Sterling Heights is as great as it is because we have the staffing and we respond accordingly. So if it's, you know, my loved one, I want to have five paramedics instead of two paramedics. You know, if you think back to when Universal was doing that with us, we had the engine and we had their ambulance. So we had five paramedics on the scene. So if you call, if somebody in your neighborhood calls and says they twisted their knee and they need to go to hospital, and all of our rigs are in service, the ambulance alone is going to take that. That's how it's non-life-threatening situations. Now, if they get to that house and it's a 300-pound patient in the basement, they're going to call the engine because two guys can't carry a 300-pound patient safely out of a basement. So it's a give and take. It all depends on the dispatchers. And for dispatching, this is new to them, too. Asking them to make the call for us on when we send our one rig or two rig, it's, you know, troubling to them. So we ask them to give us the information. They're constantly updating us on the CAD. The lieutenant or the captain of the station is looking at the CAD information, saying, you can handle that on your own, or we'll go with, you know, we want to still provide a great service. And if two paramedics and one ambulance can handle it, that's what we want to send. But if we have somebody that's suffering any of the 10 symptoms that trip EMS life-threatening, we're going to send five, possibly seven firefighters. If it's a cardiac arrest, they're getting seven firefighters to the scene because that's the way we save people's lives, is to have the staffing on the scene to do all the things we have to do. So it is still a constant work in process or progress. And I'm happy that, you know, the guys are, they're doing a great job. They're watching everything they're doing, and they're trying to make the right decision. But they not always have the right information. You know, we do have a serious amount of language barriers in 911 call where we can't get the information. And the dispatchers want to defer to sending the right amount of resources instead of short-staffing, you know, the response. So they make decisions on the fly. They might change the response. They might call for the engine or cancel the engine, but it's a work in process, progress.
Okay. First of all, I'm not complaining about it. I'd rather have more personnel there doing the job than less. And that's why I'm saying if we need to do that, then that's what we'll do. And the bottom line is, we entered into a partnership in this agreement to provide this service of transport to our residents. And I want to do the best job that we can because it is for their protections. It is for their safety. And you're right, it is life-saving. So I just want to get that point across, that I would rather have more people there than less if the situation calls for it. Did I make myself clear?
Yes.
I wasn't complaining. Okay.
Glad to hear that.
Anyone else? No? Okay.
I'll go again, but if you want to speak first.
Well, just very briefly, if you, if you will.
I guess my overall concern is, I think that we're doing a great job with the ambulance transport service that we have. But I want to make sure if we're going to go forward with expanding the program or anything, we have a policy discussion about it, rather than it just be dribble-dribble, and then all of a sudden, we have these materials. And if we have them, we must use them. That's kind of why I buy things. You don't buy a car just to put it in the garage. You buy a car to drive it. I assume if we buy an ambulance, we're going to use it. I want to make sure that if we're having that discussion, we have it as a council. So we make sure it's approved the proper way, rather than we buy everything and then we approve it later because we just have it here. That's the only point I'm making, because I think we're doing an excellent job with transport. I think the residents like it. I'm so happy we got to bring on new firefighters and expand our department. So I'm going to vote for this, but I just want to make sure we're having the discussion to make sure that we're doing it for the right reasons and not the backdoor route. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Radke. Just, I would say that I do think we're doing it for the right reasons, and I think this is a productive, it was a productive conversation. And I'm glad we were able to get the information from you, Chief, and Mr. Vanderpoel. I know there's, as you said, this is a work in progress, and it's something that we're, we have a lot of cities that we've observed that have gone to this model. And we know it's a model that works, and it's a model that our residents are benefiting from because they're getting the top level of service from professional firefighters. I was on ride-alongs, and I've seen it happen, where our firefighters snap into action. And I think that it's a great thing that's, you know, as I've said before, one of the best things, one of the best service enhancements that we've had in our city in maybe its entire history. So if you're telling us, Chief, that we need another rig and backup, I believe you, and I'm happy to support it. So without any further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. That concludes that portion of the agenda. We'll move on to communications from citizens. Any items not on tonight's agenda are fair game. Is there anyone who'd like to speak? Mr. Shea?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. First thing I want to ask is if you can give the residents an update, since the weather is changing and the roads aren't done, an update on Mound Road, Van Dyke and Canal. Will they be done this construction season, or what's going to happen? Because I can tell you right now, trying to drive around the city, that's my job. I drive. And you never know, day to day, what roads are going to be open, closed, even this time of year. So if you can give a possible update, if not, at the next meeting, because I know they just gave an update for 696 this past week. And I don't know if that's going to be done, because that's a mess down there, but that's a different city. So I want to find out through the city councils, city administration, when will the gold ring be installed on Hall Road in front of Lakeside? And I want to know, who will be doing the preventive maintenance or maintenance on the Hall Road signs and the gold rings? I was asked this, and I told the people, I said, I have no idea. I didn't even know the cost until I talked with the city administrations. Your, Megan, the secretary, she showed me where it was online, and I passed it along. But the one sign is, the gold ring isn't up yet, and I was just curious if it's going up, or what's happening, or if it's been changed. The reason I ask about the gold rings is, I've been photographing the Upton House for a long time. And I didn't want to come to the meeting, but I was really surprised at the condition of the Upton House. I just didn't notice it. Other people have noticed it, too. It sits on a prime corridor of the city. I wonder, why was it allowed to get this bad? I remember going by there and finding the American flag on the ground, and it was a specially bought American flag for the Upton House. It was torn. I don't know what happened to the American flag, the one that was bought for. It wasn't just a 50-star flag. It was a period flag for the time when the house was built. It was really nice. But what I find is, if we can't take care of the Upton House, how are we going to be taking care of, like, the gold rings, the buildings across the street, the shed, the concert halls, the new community center? What kind of preventive maintenance or maintenance programs do we have? It's unheard of to see a building right there, and people walk by it every day, seeing in that condition. I know you're going to put windows on it. You're going to put roofs on it. You're going to put all this. They put a roof on it. But it should have never been allowed to get that bad. How do we take care of buildings here? Do we wait until they're to the point of almost no return, oh, we better do this? I don't understand it. I just went to another community, and I can tell you, the house they have, the maintenance is amazing, absolutely amazing. And one thing that was interesting about the house was, besides using city funds, they had, not just corporate donors, they had people in the community that actually paid for some of it. I was really impressed. Somebody gave like $300,000 towards this building, and I was blown away. They just went out there, and they were looking, and the people thought it was a good cause, and they were willing to donate. I was like, wow, that doesn't happen a lot around here. The stairwell in front of the Upton House, there's other issues. When I posted them on Facebook, you took part of it down. And I just want to make sure that with all the new buildings we're coming into this community, that we're going to be able to take care of them. Or who's going to take care of them? City Hall? Or are you going to have to hire people to do it? I see you're putting new roofs on the library, and the police station, thank you. So that's all I have about that. And the last thing, who's going to maintain the murals that we just painted? Who's going to take care of those? Somebody asked me that. I said, I have no idea who's going to maintain them. I don't even know what the murals cost. So they wanted to know how they're going to be maintained and everything. So I appreciate it. And if you can't make it to the veterans, here at City Hall, Great Lakes National Cemetery is going to have a veterans program, 11 o'clock on Sunday, too, so at Great Lakes. So if there's any Sterling Heights residents that are buried there, they're going to have a program on Sunday at Great Lakes National Cemetery in Holly. So they do a wonderful job there. And I know your Veterans Day program is excellent, too, because I've been to it before. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shea. Anyone else on communications? Yes, sir?
How's it going? I've been in here kind of on and off for the last, well, few months. Been a while since I'm here. I'm David Parton, live in the community. I've talked with the city attorney a couple of times just regarding the medical marijuana, and obviously Prop One passed, and I'm sure I don't want to beat a dead horse on it. We all know it. As we're progressing, I want to update. We are in our second stage of Phase One with the state. So we are license number 833 right now. We're looking to move forward. We have property in the city. And I'm just wondering if it's going to be on the agenda in the near future here, what you guys think of it, or if it's going to be another discussion? I know we had one in March. And I know there's some things that need to be hashed out between you guys as well. So just wanted to kind of say hello again, and that's all.
All right. Thank you very much, sir. Anyone else on communications from citizens? If not, I'll close that portion, go into reports. Mr. Vanderpoel, anything on Mound, Van Dyke and Canal?
Sure, Mayor. I'll give a quick update on each of those. First, we are very confident, I won't say 100% confident, but very confident, that all the roadway work will be completed in Sterling Heights by year end. Now, absent any bizarre weather, starting this weekend with snow, hopefully that's short-lived. Hopefully that's gone, melted next week, and all our, the road crews will be back out. But I drove to Quinder today. That's just a matter of days from being opened up completely. Mound Road, maybe another week or so. They're just working on the final lift on Mound Road, the final layer of asphalt. Any of you who have driven it now, it's completely repaved. All the curb work's done. All the intersections are done. So the contractors in, you know, just the final week or two. So that's all we need before year end, is just a couple more weeks there to get done with Mound. The same is true for 17 Mile in Utica. Now, you can see all the prep work. They're ready to pave out Utica Road now. So it's just a matter of having a few days of good weather, all the equipment's on scene. They're ready to go. I'm confident that it's going to get done as well. Canal, likewise, the final phase is being done from Shaner over to Sol. That's progressing very nicely. I don't see any risk there of not having that completed. Stadler is underway. I'm very confident that's going to be done as well. So I think we're in very good shape with our city roads. We beg for a little more patience to get through this. We are going to have to navigate around Mother Nature, undoubtedly, the next couple of weeks, to get a few solid weeks to finish them all up. And let me just, Mayor, if you don't mind, respond just briefly on the Upton House. I think it's a fair criticism. I will say this, that the city has completed a comprehensive preventative plan for the Upton House that was completed last year. If anyone would like to see it, we're happy to make it available to the public. It is very comprehensive. We have been clicking through the plan the last couple of years. We have put on a new roof. We have new windows scheduled to go on very soon. The porch is being entirely replaced as we speak. The work started this week. It should be finished up next week. Again, pending Mother Nature. So we do have a comprehensive preventive maintenance plan we're working through with the Upton House. Like any historic home, it requires constant work and constant expenditures. We will be beefing up our budgeted expenditures for the Upton House, and you'll see those in the proposed budget as well. The signage throughout the city, along major roadways, including M-59, includes similar preventive maintenance plans. The last monument sign on M-59 is still being manufactured. There has been some delay, like most manufacturing, and we don't see that sign actually going up until later this year or beginning the next year, but certainly within the next few months. The murals, too, are part of a preventive maintenance program. They're all coated with a vinyl clear coat so that they don't fade or chip away. But even so, that may happen. We do budget money every year for our public art. We just completed an entire refurbishment of our public art display all around the city campus. We have new markers up for them as well. So we do have very exhaustive preventative maintenance programs, including for all the buildings, including the one we're in. You see the new roofing going on as we speak. Very soon, the buildings will receive new wall covering, new carpeting, painting, and the like. And next year, we'll have a lot of the IFIS redone, too, on our buildings on the public campus. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Vanderpoel. Counsel, anyone else? Or I'm sorry, Mr. Kachubski. We do have some closed session items tonight. Is that correct?
We have three items tonight, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kachubski. Counsel, anyone?
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs., we'll start with the state representative-elect, Ms. Nate Shannon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's not why I wanted the floor. But so, thank you, Mr. Shea, for bringing up the Upton House. I know there's been some discussion online recently about some of the repairs that are necessary. I was, you know, throughout the last week or two, I've been thinking about the historical commission, because I know that they're sort of in charge of, you know, of the Upton House, in a sense, I would say. And I think that one of the issues is, is that the last budget, I was able to get the council to agree with me, to put some more money into the, to the Upton House, so that they could purchase some things that would make it more fit into the period that it was built in. And so I'm very happy that we did that. But there has to, I think there has to be some other funding sources, and some things that I thought might be possible would, and I guess through the chair for the first part of it, would be to Mr. Vanderpoel, to ask if there would be a way that we could get the city administration to do some work with the historical commission, to kind of brainstorm some ideas of how, as Mr. Shea brought up, that we could get some outside sources of funding to, you know, pay for some of the things that would really showcase the Upton House.
Mr. Vanderpoel?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Shannon, we certainly can do that. We've been looking at a number of options, including the GoFundMe-type campaign and so on. I think it's a very good idea to work with the historical commission. We're looking at some very creative ideas for the Upton House. And I know even Luke Bonner's been involved in some unique economic development ideas, too, that may involve the Upton House and the surrounding grounds of the Upton House and so on. So I think it's a good idea. We'll continue to look for additional revenue sources for the Upton House and potential fundraising campaigns. There's a lot of historic interested individuals in the community and the surrounding area that I think would be happy to support the Upton House. So more to come on that.
Yep. And I guess just one, just to clarify, one other couple possibilities is, would the historical commission be able to come before the Community Block Development Grant? I'm sorry, the CBG, the Citizens?
No, Community Development Black Grant.
Yeah, but the board is, yeah, the board is the Citizens Advisory. Would they be able to come up before them in request funds, or would they not be eligible?
That's a very good question, Councilman Shannon. It's something I would have to look into. It may be eligible, and I'll report back to the city council.
And then also the Community Foundation. I don't know if they would be another source.
Another good idea.
Yeah. So just some, you know, thinking outside of the box, trying to figure out ways to be able to fund the Upton House, because I've always loved it and am a big supporter of it. supporter of it. And so, whatever we can do, I would, I think it would be great. So, thank you so much.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Shannon. Anyone else? Mrs. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. I just have a couple of items through the chair. First of all, to Mr. Vanderpoel. Mr. Vanderpoel, on 15 Mile in front of Planet Fitness, once 15 Mile was completed with the resurfacing, they came back and had to redo a couple of the manhole covers. And that was done probably a month ago. There's a few cones left in the left turn lane that are, have become like dodgem, dodgem cones. Could we just have those removed? Because they're going to cause an accident, and there's already enough accidents over there. And also, my last thing is kind of really exciting personally, and, well, for the community, it should be exciting as well. I would like to congratulate formally the Sterling Heights Ladies Swim Team, who, for the first time in school history, took the MAC Silver Division on Saturday. And I'm a little biased because I'm related to the swim captain. But, the school has never taken a division championship in all, in swim, in the ladies swim. So, it was really exciting to watch. It came down to the last race. And also, I would like to congratulate the Stevenson Ladies Swim Team for taking the MAC Gold Championship Division on Saturday. So, we have fantastic ladies swimmers in the city of Sterling Heights, and I want to congratulate both schools on their accomplishments. So, I have nothing further.
Very good. Mrs. Schmidt, thank you very much. Mr. Radke?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I had a couple of things. One, I agree with Councilman Shannon that we need to do more for the Upton House. It's something I've come into the administration and talked with extensively. I know one thing we talked about is more programming for the Upton House. Because right now, I know the historical commission governs it, but I feel like it only gets opened up a few times per year during Sterling Fest and Sterling Christmas. And it's really a wonderful community resource. And the idea that we're only using it twice a year, I think that's a real shame. I think it's kind of become an orphan, where it doesn't have a department or anyone to kind of infuse life into it. And to that effect, I've asked the administration to evaluate the idea of, while the historical commission still govern the Upton House, having parks and recreation better planted and programmed, like many of our other things. We have Sterling Frights, we have Sterling Christmas, and if we can integrate the Upton House into the rest of the parks, I think hopefully be able to get a little bit more people in there, and they'll see the benefit of putting money into it, too. That's the first part. The second part was, I had the pleasure of, a week and a half or two weeks ago, attending the Stevenson Made Academy opening, the Manufacturing Process Academy they're starting at Stevenson High School. It was really impressive. Same Andrew Vanderpoel came with me, and they have high-tech graphing and engineering and welding, and it really, the testament to the great things they're doing in Utica Community Schools. And I think that, I want to thank Utica Community School for putting this in Sterling Heights, because they could have put it in any of the other cities that they participate in. But, they decided that we're the best place because we have the Defense Corridor here, we have the auto plant, and we want to work with them to make sure that they have the best schools in Sterling Heights. I also want to commend them for earlier this year, expanding their school resource officer program, which enables us to have two more police officers in our force while keeping the kids safer. So, I just want to say, Utica Community Schools, you're doing a great job. We appreciate you in the city. Thank you for continuing to invest in Sterling Heights and making the city a great place to live. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Radke. Anyone else?
Mayor Taylor.
Mayor Protem Sirovsky.
Well, as you did somewhat mention, I just would like to congratulate former Councilman Shannon. Well, he's still councilman, but he will be, at the end of the year, no longer councilman.
A future former councilman.
He's a future former.
As we all are.
Yes, well, yes. But, soonest of all, we hope. Congratulations, Nate. Nice job. He's now state representative and I think elect. So, we do appreciate all that you've done. And I know that this is not your last meeting, but I did want to say thank you. It's been a pleasure, and congratulations to you. Great job.
Thanks.
All right, Counsel, anyone else? If not, just a couple things. I have a friend whose son is part of that program at Stevenson High School. It was explained to me from his father, and it does sound like an amazing program, and it's great to have it here in the city of Sterling Heights. We have the Veterans Day Ceremony coming up. It is on Sunday, right, at 11:00 a.m. at the Senior Center. So, please come out and support the veterans at the Senior Center this Sunday, November 11th, at 11:00 a.m. And finally, I do want to just congratulate Councilman Nate Shannon on his election to state representative. I think it's going to be very good, selfishly, for the city council and the city administration in the city of Sterling Heights to have somebody in Lansing who has a local government background. And I think it's sorely needed up in Lansing because we end up getting short shrift on a lot of things. And so, we have certainly a lot of expectation of Mr. Shannon, and I'm sure, I'm certain he won't disappoint. He did a great job as a councilman over these last three and a half years. He'll be tough to replace, but we're going to be lucky to have him in Lansing. So, thank you, Nate, for everything you've done for our city, and will continue to do for the residents of Sterling Heights into the future. I don't have anything further, but we do have to adjourn into closed session. Mr. Kachubski, will we be returning?
No.
We will not be returning. So, Counsel, we need a motion to adjourn into closed session.
Still moved. Support.
It's been moved and supported. Mrs. Riska, would please have a roll call vote?
Mrs. Zarco?
Yes.
Mrs. Kowski?
Yes.
Mr. Radke?
Yes.
Mrs. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Shannon?
Yes.
Mrs. Sirovsky?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor Taylor?
Yes. Motion carries. Seven zero, this meeting is adjourned to closed session. We will not be returning. Thank you.